Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020, Stoughton School Committee meeting. And this is being recorded on SMAC for future viewing. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just ask that you all stay up for a moment. We lost one of our, on September 10th, Emily Carrero passed away. It's a devastating thing for the Stoughton Public School community and the families. And I'd just like to have a moment of silence. Thank you. Can all be seated? So it seems we don't have anyone here for public comment. There's no one signed up. We'll move on to the superintendent's update. Dr. Marcus.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. So, just very briefly, just a couple of quick announcements. Amidst some difficult circumstances this year, we had a great start. And I think it has been amazing to see the kids in the buildings and online, to see teachers working really hard and figuring out all the nuances of hybrid and virtual and remote instruction, to see students and families adapting to their new schedules. It's just been a really wonderful experience so far. And one of the cool things that I was just walking down the hall just to stretch my legs in the preschool, and there was a really wonderful sign in Ms. Carter's room that says, "Amazing Things Will Happen This Year", and all bright colors. And it really is the spirit that we have, the spirit of adventure. This is the year of great adventures, and we're really excited about that. And it's been a wonderful, wonderful start. And I'm really so incredibly proud of our town, of this governing body, of our leadership team, our faculty, our staff, our families, and our students, who have really had Stoughton rise above the crowd and be a district that we should really be incredibly proud of. So I'm very grateful to everybody who has made it happen and those who continue to work to improve the great program that we have. So it's been a great start, a hard start in the beginning for various reasons, but a wonderful start. And we're excited to continue to move forward. So I also wanted to mention, I did send out a community communication today that was about close contacts. I want to make sure that folks are clear that we didn't have any positive cases in the district. But we wanted to send that out for two reasons. Number one is to make sure that we are being fully transparent and responsive to the community. We want to make sure that folks know that we will continue communications and keep that up to date as much as possible. And then we also wanted to clarify protocols so that folks are more sure about the rules around staying home or coming in and contacting school. So we sort of put that into the notification today. And it was, it's important for us to make sure that folks are contacting the school nurse when children are out and that they understand our protocols and that we have them in place in order to ensure that everybody is safe. One question that folks had is, you know, well, what, how would I know? If, you know, can you tell me more? And I think one of the things that we want to assure folks about is that if there's information that we need to share, we will absolutely make sure that everybody knows. So if there's, if there's any kinds of information that goes to your particular class or, you know, a close contact for your child or anything like that, we will absolutely be in touch. So mostly what we were trying to do today was just ensure that folks know that we're out there, we're paying attention, and here are the protocols to follow, so.
Thank you for that update.
Sure.
Thank you for letting us know. And we do want, not only within the public schools, for folks to be vigilant. And Molly, I would love for you to say a few words around this. But we also think that the Stoughton community, for all the folks that are watching, it's important for yourselves to try to, you know, continue to wear masks in public, maintain the appropriate social distancing so that we can continue to have the schools open and remain safe within the town.
And I think you said it very well, Sandra, but I think we can all look to the unfortunate circumstances that happened in an S-town, that sounds like Sudbury, and where there was a large party of high school students. And as a result, and I think it's happened in more than one town, you know, the schools put off from opening up again. So it's, you know, as much as everybody associated with the schools and the school families does their very best on social distancing, if these other things are happening in the town, then the town's numbers go up. If the town's numbers go up, then we, as a school committee and Dr. Marcus in connection with the DESE, really needs to take a look at closing down the hybrid in-person learning. So it's really, it really does require the entire community to join together and to, you know, think very carefully about the decisions they're making and the risks that they might be taking. Because at the end of the day, it's going to come back to the kids. And I know we all really, really want to keep this going, keep the in-person learning as long as we can.
Yep, absolutely.
I just want to add, until there's a cure or a vaccine that works, it is status quo. And everybody, when you're outside in public, inside a building, basically everywhere but your home, you need to wear a mask, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you for the update, Dr. Marcus, and thank you for getting the communication out swiftly.
Sure.
So under new business, we have the acceptance of a scholarship from Vargas &amp; Vargas Insurance Agency. So, did you want to talk about it a little?
Sure. Principal Miller got a great letter from some of our alums, Mr. Jeffrey Kamara, who's a managing partner over at Vargas &amp; Vargas, along with several other Stoughton alum who work at the agency. And they've put together a really nice scholarship that we hope you will accept, which is the Vargas &amp; Vargas Insurance Agency Scholarship for $1,000 for one recipient each year at your discretion to accept. But it's a really wonderful, a wonderful offer from an insurance agency with lots of, lots of strong Stoughton connections.
Great family. Okay, so.
Motion to accept the $1,000 scholarship from Vargas &amp; Vargas Insurance Agency, Inc.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Vargas &amp; Vargas Insurance Company, Insurance Agency. We really appreciate that. All right, so the next is, there's a few items, and it's just kind of housekeeping type thing that we've been doing the past couple of years, which is looking through some appointments and going through and just making sure that we're appointing people accordingly. North River Collaborative and Pilgrim are two that we've had to do. So wanted to discuss. Anita, how are you today?
Good.
Well, I've been the Pilgrim Area Collaborative rep for the last two or three years. Prior to that, I was the North River Collaborative. And that's when North River Collaborative directors voted to go with all superintendents. So North River Collaborative needs a superintendent nominated. And Pilgrim Area Collaborative needs a school committee member nominated. And I would love to continue to do that.
That's wonderful. Thank you for all the time that you've already put forward and that. So I guess, Dr. Marcus.
Well, I'd like to nominate a superintendent for the River Collaborative.
No, let's look, let's look around the room. Hold on.
You want to do a search?
Boom, there he is. Looks like you're the lucky fellow, so.
Motion to appoint Dr. Marcus for the North River Collaborative representative.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go, Dr. Marcus.
All right.
So do we need a motion to appoint Anita Hill?
To Pilgrim, yes.
Pilgrim Area?
Yes.
There you go.
Motion to appoint Anita Hill to the Pilgrim Area Collaborative.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anita?
Oh.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, yeah.
Speech.
And thank you.
I'll nominate.
Oh, yeah, Molly.
I'll nominate Molly to the Norfolk County Task Force.
This one, on Clarheit, that's the Sheriff's Task Force.
Ooh, the Norfolk County Sheriff's Task Force.
And the sheriff got re-elected, so we still, we're going to have the task force.
Nice. And there's a lot of great work that started in that. Molly's been to two meetings for that.
I'd say at least three meetings. We did do a Zoom meeting about a month or so ago. And it's, it's very interesting to hear all their school committee members just talk very generally what's going on. And guess what? A lot of them have been under a lot of stress this summer.
No way.
But it, but it was also nice to hear that certainly most of them in Norfolk County, I'm sure you know, are doing what we're doing with our program. That seems to be the predominant approach this fall.
Nice. All right, so I think I heard Katie nominate you, Molly. What was that, Katie?
I did.
And I will second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, and.
And just to note, Mary Shay will send a letter. At least Pilgrim Area and North River need a letter confirming it.
Okay.
I'm not sure about Norfolk County Sheriff, if they need a letter.
No.
For the task force, okay.
More informal.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Email, letters. I'm just writing this down. I hope you got that, Nicole. All right, and then for Sick Bank, two folks for that, Katie and Joe McDonough. I've done it in the past. Do you want to continue to do it?
I think it was.
It was me and Katie.
Oh.
I can do it.
Okay, good. Anita, Katie, beautiful. So there's that, and then I will appoint you to both to that, right? And then the warrants, that was you and Joe. Sorry, Katie.
Yeah.
So do we want to continue, do you want to continue that? I know Joe's not here.
Yeah, that's when you make.
I'm going to nominate, yeah, I'm going to nominate, I'm going to appoint Joe because he's not here. You're welcome, Joe.
And the flexible schedules helps to be able to pop in.
Yeah. Sorry, Joe. And then there's that piece. So we did all the appointments for now. I do want to note that we do have an appointment to the SMAC board. So to the Stoughton Media Access Corporation, the school committee has an appointment. And we should be doing it every two years. And so I looked in.
So what's happened the last five years with that?
I know.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. But I looked into it, so they have their own bylaws, et cetera. And so we have an appointment. And I wanted to bring it up here. I did reach out to the director of SMAC to let him know that it's something that we will be appointing. A person that is interested on being on the, the board of SMAC. So what I would like, Dr. Marcus, is to put that out on our Stoughton Public Schools page, that we'll be looking to appoint someone to the board, SMAC board. And hopefully at the next meeting, we can have a decision.
Oh, it doesn't have to be a school committee member?
No, not a school committee member. Yep, so, yeah. So just if people are interested, great. I think it's, it's a nice thing, especially to ramp it up because, you know, we also want some folks to be able to advocate for the schools. So anyway, wonderful things. And then an interesting thing that was mentioned in that discussion was also that the Stoughton Public Schools, we used to do an internship with SMAC. And we used to have students that participated in the media course at the high school. And I think it's a nice opportunity for students that are really into it to be able to volunteer. Even tonight, we're here, and we have someone volunteering, so.
Right.
You know, I just asked that perhaps you guys consider looking into that as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great opportunity for kids, especially going to college.
Yeah, thank you. That's a great idea.
Yeah, and they need the help. I mean, there, we have a meeting tonight, the Board of Selectmen, Select Board, excuse me, has a meeting tonight. I don't know how many others. Fincoms, I think tomorrow night.
Fincoms going, yeah.
But there's so many, and it's volunteer after, I believe it was 6:00 PM. It's volunteer time, these folks. So it'd be nice to get some of the students that are interested involved to help them out. Anyway, so there's that piece.
Do you have Facilities Mastered, we got one that we just, we actually did one meeting and then.
Microphone.
Yep, so that's the next one. We have one appointment. So we have the standing folks that were on, and then we had said we'd go back and circle back and look. I think because the year was short, we may just want to look at reappointing the same person.
I wasn't even sure when it was, but.
Yeah, it is. It was, I had the SMAC one on, on the list.
Well, that's all new for us.
Yeah. I, I had an idea last year, but when I started to look and get the information, but we had, the school year had started, and it kind of, for me, it seemed like, you know, if you have someone on a board and they're kind of going into a year, it's hard to say, by the way, hold on, you know, we want to go out. I just don't think that was fair. So it was just on the list of standing agenda topics for this year. But yeah, we have one. It's two years, a two-year appointment.
Who left the cat out of the bag?
Yeah, digging everywhere. Yeah, so, yeah, but that's great. And I think it'll be great if we, you know, can help them with some students that are interested volunteering. Anyway, so there's that piece. Thank you, Katie, for the, and a nice face mask, by the way.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so the next item we have, we're going to call Ms. Kathy Piattelli to, right over here to that mic. And we're going to go, she's going to provide the quarterly financial report to us.
Hope I'm not in your way. Okay, so first I want to say thank you for inviting me here, and it's good to see you all in person. Hey, finally.
Yay.
I wanted to acknowledge all of the hard work that everyone put into the school reopening, as well as all of the efforts that people put into the spring when we had to go remote. I especially wanted to acknowledge and thank my coworkers in the business office. They did a great job this spring, taking turns reporting to the office, making sure the paychecks got out and the bills got paid. So that was not something we could always do from home. So we took turns coming in, and I'm really appreciative for who they are, and I feel privileged and honored to work with them. And now to the budget. So because we kind of ended on a crazy note last year, I just wanted to give you a few highlights. It was not a typical year. And because so many things were canceled and we weren't able to provide services for the spring sports and transportation was cut back, we were able to redirect that funding in a positive way. We were able to get some technology in the building for the elementary teachers and the middle school teachers, not even realizing this is where we were headed this year. We also got an order of Chromebooks in and had them delivered before the rest of the country started ordering theirs. So we were pretty fortunate there. In anticipating a reduction in participation and fees being collected, we were able to move expenses from our revolving account last year for the spring into the operating budget. So that really left us with a good, solid base to begin this year. And now that we've kind of reduced fees for transportation and tuitions down a little bit, it's really helpful that we were able to do that, kind of turning a negative into a positive. We also prepaid tuitions, as we traditionally do, for the special ed students. Some of our challenges last year have kind of evened out. National Grid, we did receive some credits on that big bill. We came to an agreement with Consigly, and they're going to pay four months. And we paid our portion. So once their payment is posted on the National Grid site, we should be up to date. It's a good way to start the year. Water and sewer, it's been running between 120, 120,000 and 140,000 over the last few years. We do expect it will be lower because there's fewer people in the building right now. So that certainly should help us. But we'll definitely take a look at that as we prepare our budget for the '22 season. Turnbacks, we were also able to turn back approximately $120,000 in addition to FEMA. So we had to purchase, we didn't have to, but we did. We purchased some things in the spring that allowed us to disinfect the buildings. We did buy some PPEs, things that would be considered the fight against the virus that will become FEMA-eligible. So we're going to move those expenses onto the town side, which frees up 54,000 in our budget. And that will also be considered a turnback and will help with the free cash for next year.
Kathy, are any of the Chromebooks or laptops also on that list to be reimbursed under the CARES Act or our own FEMA?
Yes and no.
Okay.
They're not FEMA-eligible because they don't help in the fight against the virus, and that's the criteria for FEMA. When we get into the '21 budget, we do have some CARES money that if, after we purchase everything we need for this year that we know of, if there's still some money left, we can journal entry that money into that grant. But for us, it's actually a 20 expense. So it's already bought and paid for, basically, is what I'm saying.
Fiscal or calendar?
Fiscal.
Okay.
The laptops that we bought for the elementary and middle school teachers. So that's bought out of our savings from the spring closure. But if at the end of December, because the CARES grants end in December, if there's any funding that hasn't been spent, town or school, they will take the, the technology and journal it into it. So it will free up that 500,000 or so.
And are we complete now with Chromebooks and laptops?
Are we complete?
One-to-one. Excuse me, one-to-one?
We're.
Close. I think we're looking at cycling out the older.
So we also, as part of the CARES funding for this, for this fiscal year, put in for an additional 1,500 Chromebooks. So those are also coming in. So we're complete. And then as part of the regular cycle.
Right.
That's actually, you know, part of what we're doing with this. And so we'll cycle those in and start, even during the year, replacing some of the older Chromebooks.
Good.
Yeah, so.
So there's a strategy that you're going to tap into as much as the CARES Act money as you can?
Yes.
All right, great.
Yes.
After, it's going to go away after.
December 31st.
Yeah. What's the date?
December 31st.
It's actually December 30th.
Oh.
Weird. It's a Wednesday.
Oh.
It's, I don't know why they did that, but it's December 30th. Yeah, so we are going to be, we already have started the town. Okay, so I'm done with '20. Does anyone have any more questions?
I think we're all done with this.
Yeah, really.
I wish we were. We wish we were really done with '20, but.
Be wished, yeah.
So I'm just looking at buses' tuition.
So you want to go?
Okay, I don't.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're in '21, another not-so-typical year. And there's a lot to moving parts in '21. We have our operating budget. We have our traditional revolving accounts. And we have our traditional entitlement grants. We have those all the time. We use the entitlement grants, all the title grants and the special ed grants to supplement our salaries, and we pay a lot of people out of those grants. So those are all in place. Our operating budget, we are, and the other grants, we're moving very cautiously. We're being very prudent in what we purchase. And purchasing is looking different this year. It's not your traditional 300 boxes of crayons. It's individualized art packets for kids to be at home, cohort groups of supplies. So it's all looking a little different. But we are moving a little slowly in our purchasing. Payroll just started. Teachers just came back. They got their first two payrolls in the budget. So that's, they are transportation. I'm finishing up an agreement, a con, not, not an agreement, that's for you. A proposal from First Student to reduce the payments because of our reduced schedule and our Wednesdays. And there's also going to be a stipulation in there, like if we do close and we're only closed for 10 days, it will be a little less. If it's closed for 20 days, it'll be a little less. And God help us if we.
It's a little less mean because we paid a good amount last year when we weren't using the buses. And I know that some districts said, Rockland said, "We're not paying you at all." So how did, how did that go?
I don't know what they ended up paying, but.
No, for us.
Oh, for us. Last year, we paid 60% of the daily rate, which was the contract less the drivers and the fuel. So this year, it will be for the first eight days, where there were no students, 40% of the daily rate. And then for Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, 100%, because we're in school. And then on Wednesday, 80%. And then if we close for 1 to 10 days, 80% because they would like to keep their drivers employed and available.
What was that percentage?
80.
Yeah, that's craziness because aren't they, okay.
Well, that's 1 to 10 days.
But that's a national, this is a national company too, for students, so, okay.
If it goes 11 to 22 days, it would be 40%. And if we close for the season, it would be 35. But I can, I can write it all up and get it to you because.
That's what they propose?
Yes.
That's what they propose.
Right.
We'll have to see what other districts are doing too.
I just know last year during the pandemic, we paid that percentage. But there were other districts that came back and just said, "No, we're not paying." Because it is a hit to the budget. When you're, you end up paying a full bus tuition when students were paying it. And it can impact the budget, and I don't know how I feel about this year.
We, we, we did pretty well last year in terms of our comparison with other districts. I'm not even sure if there were districts that paid nothing. But we, in terms of First Student, we did better than some of the other districts that paid a higher percentage. So we ended up at 60%. There were some that were in the 75, 80%. There were one or two that were lower. But it's, it's worth looking at the proposal and.
Right, and see what the other communities that have First Student in our area are doing. Because, because we want to make sure that they're able to maintain their drivers as well. I mean, that's important to us.
So we have them when we need them.
Because we also paid the, I don't know, what was the North River?
North River vans.
Buses, the vans, we paid that full too, right?
No.
So what was that one?
That was 50%.
Yeah.
Has anything come up with that one yet?
I'm sorry.
Has anything come up with that in the event that if something, would it happen?
If something happens, there's, they, they actually have a new contract. Again, it's on a scale. If it's so many days, it's a percentage. I don't want to say what it is because I can't remember offhand. But if it's, if it's a short closure, it will be a certain amount. If it's a full forever closure for the year, it will be a different amount. I'll, I'll put them both in a.
We still have the arrangement with North River because we allow them to park and store their, their vehicles on our properties. We had, we had, was it, I don't want to say it's a discount, but we had a.
So, so I think the discount comes with that they're here. So they're not starting at their base in Rockland and coming here, picking up our students and driving them to hang them. So that's how I understand it.
There was a cost savings.
Yeah, the cost saving is in the driver's time, I believe.
I thought there was something else. I thought it was, I, I want to say that there was a little bit of a.
Reduced rate?
Yes.
Yeah.
Our first North River meeting is, is next week. So I'll bring that up and then check those things out and get that information to you all.
Thank you.
Sure.
Now that you're on the board, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was elected to.
Lucky duck.
And so the entitlement grants, those are Title I and the other titles. The special ed grants and the preschool grants, like I said, those are in place. They support a lot of our salaries. Revolving accounts, we haven't seen the fees yet because school just began. So we'll pay close attention to that. And then there's the CARES and COVID grants. So the town got a CARES grant for $2,552,455. So what they did was they set up on the MUNIS account for the schools, $1,552,455. And then they had the, the other thousand, a million, sorry.
And that's a, that's a two-year grant, correct?
No, this is December 30th.
Oh, that's the CARES, but then there's, is the COVID the one that, I thought that was for 2022? It was two, you're right.
Ursa.
You're right.
Yeah, there's more coming.
So the town's CARES, so they set it up so that we can actually put our requisitions right through to, to that number, so hit that number so that we know when we hit the 1.5, we're done there. It has to be, of course, eligible expenses that support our remote learning and our reopening of school. Lot of PPEs, lot of technology, sound systems for the schools and
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
On the funds for this CARES grant that came in, was there a specific allocation that the state had noted? For the schools? Or was it just one lump sum that came to?
I, I'm not understanding. I think it's the mask. I can't hear you.
Was it one lump sum that came to the town or was, did the state have clear intent on, out of that amount, what goes to the schools?
Oh, no. It went to the, it went to the town. The town wrote the grant. And they asked us what we needed. We met and put a list together and submitted to them. And then it was one day, we were trying to we had a Zoom meeting with the people from the town and us, and we said, "Would it just be easier if we set up our own accounts instead of having to keep asking, you know, is this okay? Is this okay?" So they said, "Perfect." Here's 1.5. So as far as the division of the money, is that what you're asking? There's no written rule. And they, and actually the fire chief said, you know, "If we have some at the end and you still need more stuff, we'd be happily to move that over to the schools." Is that not what you're thinking?
No, I, I, yeah, no, that's fine. So you said something. I was just confused when you said the accounts and they said, "Don't set up the separate," like what does that mean? Is it something in the budget? Will we get the budget we're gonna do?
It's general ledger accounts for in the account, in the accounting application.
So it's just in Munis?
It's in Munis.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So I don't, okay.
And they set up the accounts so we could
Simplify the process.
Yeah, instead of going through our budget, we go through the CARES.
Okay.
Different counting numbers.
It sounds like it was a, like a very efficient and respectful to the schools' needs position. So I'm actually happy to hear that the town agreed to do it that way.
Yeah.
Very much so. And I, and I know that from other towns, that the municipal side of the CARES money wasn't necessarily, there wasn't that kind of a discussion. This is ours. We gotta deal with, you know, these kinds of municipal things. And so that's where it went. This was, as Kathy said, a nice conversation to sort of figure out what does everybody need and work together.
Good. That's great.
So then there's the schools' CARES, school reopening grant. And that is $786,825. That also ends December 30th. And so that has been written for some more technology, PPE. Some staffing for special ed staff to do some testing that wasn't able to be done in the spring. So you can use, you know, for temporary placements. So we have a lot of temporary teachers that we had to hire because we have teachers working virtually and facilitate us. So we had to, because of the enrollment, we couldn't just go, if we have three teachers, one's doing remote, we needed more than the two teachers. We had to, for lack of a better word, backfill those jobs. And you are able to use that money only until December 30th. So what's gonna happen then? You know, that's to be figured out. But right now, that's where we stand. Again, there's more technology written into that and PPE. Then there's the Ursa grant. That is that is a two-year grant. And that is $445,542. And right now, we wrote that to cover the salary of three elementary teachers as well as some PPE. But if that doesn't all get spent, that rolls into next year and that's available to us until June 2022. So that's, that's a good thing. And then there's a summer vacation learning grant that allows staff to work with students on Saturdays to make up any regression that they had during the COVID closure. Like I said, there's a lot of moving parts this year. And we're just trying to keep it all straight and make sure that we take advantage of all of the funding as well and make sure it's eligible. So that when they come back in two or three years and they audit everything, which they will, because they did with SFSF and AARO grants in 2010 and 11. So we're keeping good records and keeping our pots of money separate. So do you have any questions for 21?
Nope, not yet.
So now we're moving on to FY22. And we've sent out all the request forms to the administrators to begin their submitting their requests for 22. And we've set up meetings for early October so that we're in a place to bring a first draft to the school committee by mid-October. And that is three years all in one.
Thank you.
A lot of moving parts.
A lot of moving parts.
Lots to figure out right now. But your office is doing a great job figuring everything out, so.
Thank you. I have a great staff. Very happy.
I know you sent an email that broke out. I'd asked Dr. Marcus to have you send an email to the school committee, breaking out all of the temp staff that we've hired so far in the class for that. That must've taken a lot of time for you to do. To have to, you know, I know you've been tracking everything closely, but I appreciate the fact that you turned that around so quickly. I don't know if you can tell what I'm saying. Oh, and my mic's not on.
Charlotte's a raving.
So I do appreciate the fact that you did turn that around very quickly. And that was helpful because I think it's important for the school committee to know what's impacting the bottom line budget with all of this temporary staff that we have to hire. And we just don't have a choice. So even though that you've outlined all of this hard work that folks have done throughout the town for these grants and additional funding, still, this is all kind of, it's used up. It's, is, is, it's very clear that we have salaries, we have busing that we potentially may have to cover. And we don't know how that's gonna work out if that's the case. But in addition, we had the Jones Early Childhood Center where because of the, the days that they are going in the school with the hybrid model out of our budget, we also had to cover some of the cost for the teachers additionally because we had to cut down on the fees for the families. So we're getting pieces hit, pieces here and there. So I do appreciate that you sent that other thing because I was listening while you were talking and putting those numbers in play in all this, so. Thank you.
You're welcome. And, and like you said, the preschool tuition being reduced because of the numbers, which was a great thing that we were able to do
Right.
last year, kind of getting ready for this year by moving the expenses.
Because we anticipated potentially something, this was coming, so.
Right.
But then again, that causes, and I think you kind of hit on it at the start too, what happens with that is it causes us to have to prioritize some things. And then when we were budget, when we were having budget discussions at the start of last year, some of those things kind of got pushed down, unfortunately, and that's
Gonna be flexible.
Yeah. So 2020.
Yeah.
That's all I can say.
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Kathy. Does anybody have any questions? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Piattelli.
Great evening. Okay, we have for all businesses, the budget, budget and articles.
And it's a great segue, I think, from where Mrs. Piattelli just was in terms of trying to juggle three different years and sort of looking into how, you know, what are we gonna do with this coming year? And we have Article Six that's going to the special town meeting, which is about the supplemental budget. And one of the critical pieces there for us is that there was additional Chapter 70 funding that, that came in that, as Mrs. Piattelli talked about, a lot of this CARES kind of funding ends on December 30th. And so we're gonna be looking for that kind of funding, that additional funding, if we continue to go through into 2021 and need to continue to fund the temporary positions, the daily subs, things like that, the, the health support people that we've had to bring in. So there's lots of folks that have, that have been a part of this. And I think that's a critical piece for us, is that Article Six and the supplemental funding comes to the schools and that we're able to have that funding available to be able to support the ongoing needs of the district in terms of not just COVID and those kinds of things, but, you know, all the things that we need to do for kids in order to make for a great education. So, so it's, it's, it's perfect timing between here we are trying to sort of put all these pieces together. And this has come along for us to sort of deal with right now. And I think it's perfect timing because it will really be helpful for the, for the schools as we move beyond December 30th.
Can I ask a question, only because you mentioned all that? Maybe Kathy, you may know and you might not know off the top of your head. But how many currently employees do we have total? That, so I'm just wondering from a operation standpoint, what that number is at this time with the temporary staff included? Because it would be nice to have an idea of the operation at hand and budget
Right.
what we're dealing with.
Right. It's a good question.
You know, would you mind being able, would you know, your face, you look terrified, by the way.
Well, not off the top of my head. I know for temporary, we were doing 11 permanent and then
Right.
10 daily subs and six.
Right. We have those, we have those numbers, but I think, Mrs. Grob, you're, you're looking for like an, an overall FTE? Okay.
Yeah.
Plus everyone else, plus us.
I think it would be nice to have an idea, especially with
Sure, we can pull it together.
And I, I want to add to that list. The number of personnel, you know, not just teachers, but the number of personnel total that took leave of absence.
I didn't hear you.
That took leave of absence, that people, number of bodies.
Do you, do you have a rough estimate of?
So you want active and then leave of absence. Active number.
Please.
And then those on a leave of absence.
So the total number of teachers who took a leave?
I wouldn't just do teachers. I would do, because it's, it's not just
No, I know. Yeah, I'm gonna break it down a little bit.
Okay.
So the total number of teachers, I think, is about four or five altogether. So not as many as we expected. Then we have some paras. We had probably about five or six, I think, para-professionals who took a leave. Those were the only sort of contracted CBAs that, that actually had an MOA of that, of that kind, a memorandum of agreement about leaves. We've had a couple of cafeteria folks. No custodians, I don't think, in that group. No administrators who've asked for some time off, but that's about it. So it's, it's actually not as, as big a number as we expected.
Okay.
I'm glad you were able to work that out in, in a way that did give people who needed to take that off.
Right.
And I think it
Right.
I think, I'm glad the number is small, but I'm also glad that certain people had that opportunity to consider whether that made sense for them.
Right.
That's great.
Yep. And kudos to the school committee, you guys, for extending the period of when they could take a leave of absence. So that was a big deal too.
That was a big deal, yeah. Thank you for that.
Because the deadline, we ended up pushing out quite a bit so that people could have a little more time over the summer to think about it and consider options. That was weird. I said to the school, "I'm on the school committees." I'm like, sorry, I did not intend it that way. I meant to you, to you guys, like, whatever. Anyway, so the total number, and then Dr. Marcus, do you have a total number of students that are enrolled in the Stoughton Public Schools? Like off the top of your head estimate?
Off the top of my head, it's a little, a little above 3,500. So it's like 3,504 or something like that, 3,506.
Wow.
So.
That's very, very close estimate.
It's some, it's somewhere in there. It's sad but true that I actually do go through Power School and I click on each of the grades to see the fluctuations, just to see where we're at. There was an interesting question that was asked of superintendents last week about, you know, where are we seeing the greatest kinds of fluctuations based on COVID and those kinds of things? With a theory that it was kindergarten. And for us, it's not necessarily, so. Yeah. But
I only have one last, and this is all budget related, I swear to you guys. I just want to understand better. And then how many students do we have that are out of district that, so Kathy, I know that we prepay for students out of district, et cetera. Do we roughly, would we be able to get that number as well?
Yeah, I don't have that off the top of my head, but
Because while we service 3,500 students, we also provide for a certain number outside as well within the budget. Okay.
Correct.
You mean our students out of district?
Yes, Stoughton.
The special education.
Yeah, special education, anything out of district that we pay out of our budget.
Yeah. That, and, and that changes just a little bit each year, but I think I can get that information over to you from Ms. Sampson.
Okay.
Sure.
But speaking of the budget, I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Marcus and Sandra for advocating for the Stoughton Public Schools the other, the other week on the Finance Committee meeting. Very passionate. And I was listening to it. And I just wanted to say thank you. Because of course, yet again, the money, you know, the extra Chapter 70 money is going. They want to put it towards the town side. So again, we have to try to fight for that money so that it goes to the students. But I just wanted to say that you two are fabulous and I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your support, Katie. Yeah, I forgot.
The team effort.
Every, every day, Dr. Marcus and I were extremely passionate and it was still last minute, to be honest. It was what, an hour? An hour before we didn't know. And we had just finished talking about budget and Kathy, you were coming in the meeting and how excited we were because we felt like if this goes past December 31st and, and, and we're good, you know, we're great, but we're still paying in the extra staff because the CARES money goes away on the 30th. So we were like, at least we have, we know that we're in a good space. Then we said, worst case, that doesn't happen. We go remote. We still have all these people we have.
Right.
Right? It's a little different now because now we're paying busing instead of the subs. And now we're paying all the others. So we were kind of excited that we knew we had this
balance.
Chapter 70 money that the state obviously intended for us to, to, to get, especially during this time. And then that happened and we were like, oh my gosh. It was almost like
Yeah. It was scary.
It was scary.
But that meeting's again tomorrow night with the Finance Committee and they're gonna have some some kind of solution, so just wanted everyone to know.
Yeah.
Keep fighting. Thank you.
Yeah. And I think it's more, it's not even like, don't even look at it like fighting. I look at it like we just want people to understand.
Advocating.
Yeah, we're just advocating.
Advocating, it's pretty advocating.
We just want them to understand what that money is intended for. We don't look for other Chapter 9, any other funds that come through in the same budget that go into the same account. We're not, we just want to be able to provide what the state meant it to be, which is students with an equal opportunity as the other districts. That's why we got more than expected based on the calculation. So we just want to be able to do that. But yeah, anyway.
And maybe one year, we won't have to fight for it, but I doubt it.
Well, you know, I guess we're lucky. We have good people in the town, good volunteers that are on all these committees. Someone's husband's on there. And
And we keep an eye on it. I think that's really the key is to, you know, to know what
Yeah. So we, you know, only thing you can do is go and advocate and passionately advocate. Dr. Marcus, you were very passionate. I'd never seen you that passionate.
It was the Altoids.
It was the Altoids. Oh, you put two in your mouth at once that time, huh? But yeah, I think it was because we had been, so we were talking about how we felt like, okay, either worst case, we think, right, like Kathy, you just brought all this information. We're like, okay. And then that happened.
With all the, with all this extra information, it'll be great.
It just scared the daylights because that's a whole different Stoughton Public Schools. Anyway, thank you for bringing that up, Katie. Thank you for watching.
Listening, yes.
Yes. Well, yeah, I don't even know what it was anymore. Everything's Google or Zoom. So, all right, so great. Kathy, thank you. Yeah, the numbers would be helpful. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It was nice to see you too.
See you. Take care.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Special town meeting, does anyone know why it's so early? And why is it special? It should just be a fall town meeting.
Biannual.
That's what they call it for the fall meeting.
They should just say fall town meeting.
It can be anywhere, anywhere from September to December, depending on when they get their act together.
They always have it like at the end of November, beginning of December.
Because the warrant, they need to announce it 45 days before they close the warrant. And they, the warrant has to close 45 days before the special town meeting can occur. So if they, the longer they wait, the later it gets. So they started early this year.
They started early. They have till December. What was the date, Dr. Marcus? First?
First or sixth?
First or sixth. It might have been even
Oh, it might even be the sixth?
Um, they have. So, and I know in prior years, we've always done late November, early December.
Nobody wants to do it around Thanksgiving. They don't want to get too close to the holidays.
But we always have it every year. It's always
It doesn't, this is It doesn't, this is the first year. So we're lucky, that article was Chapter Seventy money, by the way, that's in there. At first, we were trying to figure out, how do we get those additional funds? And it was, okay, it'll just be earmarked, don't worry. And then the day of, the last day, when articles could go in, it was better get a article in, just to make sure that Chapter Seventy money gets allocated to the schools. And, and that happened. So I will thank, you know, I know you worked with Dr. Grimm on that. And Chairperson Howe, I know, was trying to work that out. So I appreciate that. But now that we're here, you know, with 3,500 students that we service daily in three different modes.
Right.
Remote, hybrid, or, you know, virtually. And a large number of employees. I just, it's just very important for us to be able to, yeah, anyway. Moving on, thank you, Dr. Marcus. Thank you, Kathy Piattelli. Other matters, we have the acceptance of the minutes from September 8th, 2020.
Motion to accept the regular meeting minutes of the school committee on September 8th, 2020?
Second.
Any edits, any revisions?
I'm good.
Okay, all in favor? All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I was stalling for you, Molly.
No, I, I reviewed them. They look good.
Oh, great. Oh, guess what? That's it on the agenda. Wonderful, all right. So I guess we'll now be going into executive session to discuss the union negotiation strategy for the STA memorandum of agreement and the acceptance of the minutes from the July 24th meeting and the September 8th meeting. We will not be coming back into public session. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Katie, all right, roll call.
Aye.
Molly.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Yes. Great, thank you, everyone. Have a great evening. Stay safe.
Thank you.